I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. Morning, Madam Monitor. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda? Are there any conflicts of interest? All right, I entertain motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved and seconded Dozart and Mulbauer on favor, states of by saying aye.
Aye.
No. There's no tie. Thank you, Gene.
You don't get it. We can't have donuts virtually, Gene. You're not allowed.
We we have donuts and I'm not there. Just say me one.
Certainly want to plant it that way.
Is it some kind of celebration?
Sort of.
You guys are funny. Thank you. I miss you guys, too. Having a hard time hearing you guys. Now I hear you. All right.
Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The board approved the sheriff's quarterly report for April through June of 2023. The board approved hiring Spencer Schultz, appraiser administrative assistant. The board approved the hiring of Colton Johnson, seasonal park attendant at Yellow Smoke Conservation Department. The board approved hiring of Evan Zeeman, Ziman. Yard assistant engineers department. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Hayden, to approve the contract bonds and certificates of insurance with line and construction for the new Manila maintenance shop. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve tax abatement and assigning tax held certificates for parcels zero four, one, four, two, zero, two, zero, zero, nine, and zero, zero, five to Tammy Quail. Motion passed unanimously. Amy Piper, H R, had a discussion with the board about workman's comp income replacement. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozart, to table the discussion. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Hayden, to approve the payroll transition for employees to a fourteen day lag. Voting aye, Dozart, Rosberg, Mulbauer, and Hayden voting nay. Schultz, motion passed. Trenette or Meyer County Treasurer and Dwayne Zink. Cessor had a discussion with the board about parcels, active and inactive. Abate taxes for building on leased land. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Hayden, to approve the five inactive and one active mobile home parcels to merge into, oh, to approve the four inactive and one active mobile home would be merged into the land parcel. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the tax abatement of two, two, seven, six, Yellow Smoke Road. Dennison for Spencer and Brooke Ball, a new dwelling. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozart, to approve the tax abatement of thirteen oh, seven. Mees Ridge Road, Dunlap, Joanne Mees. A new dwelling. Motion passed unanimously. The board had a discussion about pipeline safety and setbacks, potential ordinance. Colin Johnson County Attorney had a discussion with the board about a budget amendment for the county attorney's office. No action was taken at this time. During citizen input. Iglesia Evangelical Jesus S L Camino Incorporated talked with the board about abatement. Yeah, I'll say that again. Their taxes from 2021. It was recommended that they pay the 2021 taxes. And when they receive the 2022 tax statement, to request to be on the agenda for tax abatement. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned at twelve twenty seven P M. Agendas for the next meeting are posted in the vehicle courthouse on Friday, four thirty P M preceding the next meeting.
That was a lot, even when we were discussing the last week.
A lot. That was the easiest way to kind of condense it. I I looked and I do believe those 2021 taxes. And it was, it's actually redemption because a stakeholder had purchased the certificate. So I believe that has been redeemed.
Let's stand.
I know, I hope so, too.
Do we have any additions or subtractions or corrections to the minutes?
Sounds higher than I remember it.
All right. Seems like you did a great job.
Motion to approve.
I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart, or Mulbauer. All favor of the state, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. All right. I thought you were reminding me to say something.
Oh, no, no.
All right. Okay, next up is supervisors' report. Gene, could you lead us off today so that you don't get cut off?
I just, I just have a few things. I've dragged down the interstate to the Fargo Dome. So I had a call about what's going on out at Nelson Park, wondering, you know, we had said that we were going to update the electrical and do some things out there. Has that work started yet?
I don't believe it has, Gene.
They were kind of wondering what
Could you repeat that, Gene?
They were kind of wondering what the holdup is on that, when they can expect to see some improvements out there. And I said I might out.
Oh, that's a definitely a a good question to ask, but why they haven't started on that yet? If they're just gonna wait till after this camping season before they tear that all up? Well, and I'm guessing maybe it could be also be as much problems we're having getting electrical or electricians to work at the city center. Maybe they're facing the same challenges there, Gene. I'll double, I'll check on that.
And that's all we can ask is just to make sure that it's still, you know, going forward, that we keep it on the top of the agenda here so that we can make sure it gets done. I understand the electrical thing. I did have some conversations with some public health board members about how we're gonna go forward. So got some plans on that, I hope, but my reception is gonna be really bad at the Fargo Dome, so I'm just gonna probably cut out. It's it's a big building, so just want to get that in.
Is there anything? Do you have anything else?
I'll go listen as long as I can.
Okay, thanks, Gene.
Thank you.
Mr. Mulbauer.
Okay, yeah, I'll start off with Region Twelve we had, I had last week. We had an executive board meeting first, and then we had a policy council meeting second, which Gene was a part of as well. I'll start off with the executive board meeting and kind of end up being a little bit of a lengthier meeting. We had some discussion. There's a couple amendments I wanted to make to our intermediate meat and poultry loan fund. I'm gonna talk a little bit about this with you, Ty. One was they're getting a lot of interest from people or businesses that wanted to not necessarily process or be a kill facility for livestock. They wanted to buy box beef or pork and then cut them up into specialty pieces and then redistribute it. The idea of the loan, the meat and poultry loan fund is to promote competition by our farmer producers, our markets. promote us local. My question with that was that I was concerned about if we allow, let's say, and that's that fifteen million dollar fund, Craig. If we allow a company to come in and buy box beef wherever, you could potentially have a J B S who's Brazilian owned, come and say, hey, I'll sell you that box beef for a lot less than what you can buy locally. My concern was, well, that undermines the whole premise of what this fund is for. So we we
Wasn't slaughter a particular kind of the premise of why you wanted it?
It it was.
Be able to create more slaughter facility?
So that we had a lot of pretty lengthy discussion about how to manage that. Of course, these amendments aren't, it still has to go through a loan committee that either recommends approving the loans or not, and then coming back. There's a lot of steps that still have to, you know, to get any of these funds have to happen before a company can have that. But we all agreed as an executive board for Region Twelve that we would like to see stipulations that the meat has or the box beef or pork or whatever it is would have to be sourced locally and not imported from outside of the United States, trying to protect our farmers' interests. So we moved forward with making that amendment to try to help spur even growth of these plants or these facilities to help give competition in our food sources. The second one that we did not approve at this time was, and I have to specifically deal with a little bit, I don't want to do too much of the cat on the bag, but a company out of Western Iowa that wanted to, or Eastern Iowa that wanted to upgrade its equipment in Illinois. However, it uses a lot of producers in Iowa. And their thought was if we can upgrade our facility for processing the meat we produce, we would then expand into Iowa with more producers in that way. And I, we didn't feel as comfortable about that one because what's gonna stop them from, thank you for the money in Illinois. Now we're gonna produce and or grow our footprint in Illinois. So until we have some more talks and some more of a written down game plan of what they are actually trying to do, we tabled that one. It's not uncommon for states that have this USDA loan like Region Twelve to go outside of their state because they're helping our region typically. But I said, we we wanted to make sure that it benefited us here as well. And just kind of pump the brakes on that one.
You know, Dave, I read an article in the Drover's Journal this past week that Walmart is putting up a new two hundred and fifty million dollar processing facility in Alatre, Kansas. And that's gonna supply stores, including our one in Dennison in eleven states. Iowa's included in that. And their plan is there's a new packing plant that's going on down there that I think is gonna produce, they're gonna kill fifteen hundred cattle a day, a hundred thousand a year. Walmart's gonna take the majority of that and do all the processing in this plant so that none of their stores have to have butcher or anybody in the store. They're gonna make the, process it down to, you know, just like four burgers in a container.
Right.
And ship it out that way. So that's the competition. I guess that's what's moving forward.
And and that's a good point. So none, none of this loan fund can go to, it's written out, any of the big four.
What about the new one down in the Glenwood area, the new packing house?
The Heritage D.
Didn't they get a bunch of money out of this program?
Okay.
Governor gave it directly to you.
Yeah, I think they got.
I just
Pretty good chunk.
Did they cross one hundred and fifty?
That's what I heard. But our, I hope it goes because all those type of things are what you need to spur our markets.
I'm just afraid they're gonna get that all up. And one of the big fours is gonna come in and flash a number in front of them. They can't resist and so check out, buy.
Well, even like the greater Omaha or Nebraska beef even, you know, could end up.
Well, that's where, you know, this is more federation, but where Cool Country of Origin labeling needs to really be reinstated because all that happens now is you'll see a J B S come in and oh, we'll, we'll just bring in our, our cuts of meat into, into the United States. Cut them up further into box beef and now it's U S meat. And undercut our, our prices.
Who are our biggest detractors, what are you gonna say, for Country of Origin labeling?
National cattle.
Was it, wasn't it National Cattlemen's?
Yeah.
Who are they? Who's also members of National Cattle Association, the four big backers?
Big crackers, yeah.
Plot thickens.
Yeah. And that's, that's why I think we need to
Majority of the membership, I believe, with one Cool.
Yeah. Our cast and some of your other organizations like that are all in favor of Cool.
I think one of our big local farmers doesn't have anything to do with National Cattlemen's anymore. And that was one of the main sticking points for him.
Well, that's funny because you have the Cattlemen, you have the Packers. Packers donate a lot of money to the
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
Same thing with any other industry, even in Iowa Motor Truck, it's the big pipeline.
I mean, John Shavitt's probably the biggest pusher of Cool and this there. I think he's even testified at Congress.
Yes, yes.
But it just makes perfect sense, John, doesn't it?
But if you can come, if you can, you know, bring in beef from Mexico or South America and repackage it and stamp it as product of the U S.
Right.
And sell it for a premium for lower quality, standard grown protein. It it undercuts what we do here, right here in Crawford County.
Yeah. Canada, I don't, I don't remember if Canada made a big stink about Cool or not, but I mean, I always, I I have a lot of trouble viewing them outside of our realm because we do so much import, export with them. You know, I mean, we sell as much meat as we gain from them, so.
I'm not sure all the details as well, but I think of the Bill Sac put out a statement that Cool is, is not as easy to reinstate as you would think, which because of all our trade negotiations with other countries and agreements we're already in. But it's still, without it, is hurting us.
Sticky whip.
Another thing that was brought up, we have I R P four revolving loan fund and that's one that Rick got for us. It's a million dollar fund, five and a half percent interest. We have to get that money out for expanding economic growth in businesses. We weren't seeing it within the six counties being totally used up. Which we, part of our agreement through the loan that got, we gotta get it out. So we expanded it to the central Iowa region.
And cover Monona County down there.
One thing that was brought up, something you pointed to, well, of that region, we don't want to see it going to Hope County.
Right.
Because they already seem to get
The lion's share of everything?
Everything anyways.
Monona County, they don't have like a Region Twelve that they belong to. They just
They don't?
No, they're just like, what's Sioux City Betterment Corporation or something.
Why wouldn't they want to join?
But this is a rural fund.
I think we got a rough, as economic development talk.
Maybe Rick and Chris are even right over there.
This was a rural fund anyway, so that does not make the large portion of Hope County eligible anyways. It would only be like the northern part, just North Hope City. That is rural. Yeah.
Yeah. Not for long.
Basically, expanded the Audman Boone, Carroll Crawford, Dallas Green, Guthrie, Jasper, Marion, Hope, Sac, Story and Warren. So we approved that just to make sure that we use those funds and get that out there to
So we don't lose it.
Get to work, right? My next one was our policy council meeting. Wasn't as in depth. It was more director reports. I can pass that around. We have our fiscal report. We had a transportation report that Chris Whitaker did. Kind of interesting. They show some roads that, road projects that got funded through some of the different tip funding in S T B G. One of them was the city of Dennison, which is right here. North Main and East Broadway, that's gonna get some work done to it, using some of these funds that got approved. So it's just nice to show that, you know, it's working for all the region. It's not just one county getting the lion's share of anything, but it's truly being used throughout the region. And Heather, I thought this was Henry. Chris showed the bridge element, the H B P Bridge Fund. He had a nice picture of a tractor falling through a bridge. We don't run here.
Maybe you should.
Not that one. He said, he always looks for pictures like that. I said, well, as long as it's not me in your picture.
Yeah.
So here's that transportation improvement program. Then Matt gave us our transit report. He just went through the numbers as far as vehicle inventory, transit staffing, things like that, who's rideshares, miles given. We did approve many few amendments to prove that was just housework, bookkeeping, like the transportation improvement program, the tip program. And then also the transportation improvement program altogether, which we have to do every year. I went over a little bit of local assistant report. Home fund housing projects, right now Nora is getting some done, Dennison, Manning. With a new one out, which is very interesting that I I think this could help a lot of people. The USDA housing funded projects, housing preservation grants. It's actually a grant, not a loan. For owner occupied housing rehabilitation. So what that does is helps lower income people with maybe a new furnace or water heater or electrical work, you know, so your house will catch on fire, plumbing, that needs to be
That's the house that they own, not one that they
No, this could be anyone. As long as you qualify.
So somebody, you could be renting a house for me and you qualify and you could get a new furnace put in?
Well, that you'd have to probably, the owner would have to apply.
Right.
Not the, you know, it's a, it's a owner occupied housing. Oh.
Owner occupied, okay.
Oh, so I don't think you could go as it, you couldn't go own a whole bunch of rental houses and get a bunch of work done and rent them back out. It's just for the people trying to own a home or help them out that are lower income.
I've seen, it looks like on the, the shuttle stuff must be Smithville, Smithville must, their Sioux City shuttle must be an aero bus line, too.
Yeah.
That's what I've seen running in and out of there.
Said there's two aero buses always sitting up here by Italian restaurant, Bell and Sarah, like every, all the time.
Yeah, so I kind of wonder if that's who they're using. Must have got a deal or, I just didn't, I first assumed when I heard they're doing it, I assumed they were using it as our services. They got a better deal.
I think they got a different deal. Another interesting thing, Craig, you years were perked up, our Western Iowa Workforce Development Organization got thrown into a huge area in the west over here. They just kind of left it all together and states take it over. All those meetings that they kept telling us go to, to me were pointless because they're taking it over anyways, which they did. So counties are out of that role altogether. It was kind of random. Cog Roll was a fiscal agent for Western Iowa Workforce, ended June thirtieth. See final onsite in Sioux City, had no findings. They had helped, the cog had helped with that program for forty years. A long time, yeah, they were. And then also the Region Twelve turns fifty here July seventeenth.
I'm in there.
The cog has been around for fifty years.
Frickin', frickin', crystal look though.
They take it. Another thing to note, director's report. The Region Twelve will become a fiscal agent, agent of our homes for Iowa. And as the prison homes that are being built, you can purchase.
That's a mispurchased word.
Manning had a couple of them. There's a few around.
Yeah.
It's gotten to a point that the prison itself didn't want to be the fiscal agent. They just want to be in control of, they build it, sell it. And it worked great for Region Twelve to step in. We already have the staff in. Basically the logistics to handle that. And we took that on. Let's, let's have some paperwork, look through those reports if you want.
Right.
This is about everything that happened at that meeting. Us, Gene, do you have anything to add with policy council meeting?
Maybe lost. I can't talk right now because I'm in the dome, but I think you covered it pretty good, Dave.
Tell the officer hi.
Is that in Thunderdome?
Fargo Dome, yep.
Thanks, Gene. Anything else?
Outside of, whenever you guys want to talk about our trip to Marietta.
Go ahead.
Oh, very great trip. I know Kyle's been there before. Very good to have that relationship with people running it there. So they, they put bases of names and likewise just amazing what they're doing out there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's kind of When they said we buy forty two thousand tons of limestone and ten thousand tons of ground. It's a hundred and fifty thousand tons of which every year, every year. Yeah, I mean, it's not, that's it's just amazing when I, when you sort of think about how much rock you put on. As to how many miles of road you have, how much luck you put over all the months. That was me more than that. You think you have nothing but gravel. If you don't, it's gone. Where does it go?
You know, the, the natural stone, stone don't break down like as fast or as quick as a limestone. And you can see the limestone and the crops along the, right, the roads. Break down and turn into dust. You would think that would be there forever. And eventually at some point in time, you wouldn't have to put any more up, but it's not the case. It's that dust flying up behind you.
That's what Paul actually brought up, Kyle, is he said to, as we drive over it, it breaks up rocks. He said, that's what's good about the Fort Dodge is it actually holds up better than, and they called it the Gilmore shelf, which actually stems underneath us. It's just a lot deeper to the, our terrain there. But the stone holds up so much better. And so we don't lose it to dust.
Versus the
Or what we were getting out of Logan and stuff like that.
That's a softer limestone.
Exactly. That's, they can explain that. So I mean, yeah, now that you say that.
I like Ty's point. Someday they'll be in Crawford County.
I don't know, I said, where Dave and I started whispering, I wonder how we could, who we could talk into doing some boring and figure out how deep we gotta go.
Well, most of the price, have it all in a conveyor belt over, comes out of the ground with a Fort Dodge and a rail.
You have to reel it.
Haul that way to haul back? A great tour, just all did a good job of lining it all up and we also got to stop by, you know, by Sac City Strafford's pile that we're all pulling off of and cool. Check that out.
Stop on Tenth Street.
Stopped on Tenth Street. Check out our rail spur.
Yeah.
And just had a good, good trip, good day.
Yeah, it was actually quite interesting. I learned, I learned quite, I learned quite a bit about how they do all that stuff. Yeah. All the work that goes into making better roads in Crawford County. Way before you ever see the rock.
Right. Quite a process to get it. Right, quite a process to get it out of the ground and to our roads.
Why we can't afford that, get a lot of that. Anyway, that's all you have, sir.
That's all you have.
All right, Mr. Dozer, what do you have for it?
Last week had a Wesco meeting. A couple of. Things I guess I can start with is Bill Bruce is gonna be our new president, Eric Scoop is staying on board, he'll continue as VP. They are looking for more board members, so they put out maybe a public. Notice to let people know that they're looking to having a few board, a couple of board members step down. Interesting thing is that they're, they were looking, their wave program that they have at the church, can't think of the name of it, by the. Cross from the Methodist Church, in a corner from the library. That's their, the lease is up next March, and so they've been looking for a new location. And they got an investor to come up and was gonna build them. Place and build it to the specs of Wesco. And Wesco just rented from the investor, so it's, the lease is up March of twenty twenty-four. And the builder said he should have the place done by then, so that's a. That's a good thing, and the other thing that they're looking at for long term, five year perhaps timetable is currently Wesco. Residents occupy about fifteen homes in Croft, in Dennison. And they're looking at having a builder or investors build five ranch style homes that would. House those people that are currently in those fifteen houses, so that would free up an additional, we always talk about a housing. Crisis for high housing shortage in Dennison and Crawford County, that would free up fifteen additional homes over. A five year time period, so I think that's encouraging. And Wesco, I mean, Clay does a wonderful job there, and he said if you, if we as a board want to talk to him sometime, he'd be happy to come up. To a meeting, but a lot of good things happened down there.
He's got a hell of a crew there.
Yeah.
Him included, obviously.
Oh, that's it.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Schultz.
Well. Started off last Wednesday, had a long, long conversation with Tim Baldwin. It went very well, you know, Tim is. Probably one of the most level-headed, down-to-earth guys that I know, but you know, I could tell he frustrated, yes, last week. As was the contingency that was here, and I just wanted to reach out, knock him off, off the record. It just wasn't much different than what his concerns were here. And he said, you know, whole long briefing he was gonna give us until. Pulled the carpet out from underneath him, Shelby County was a hell of an intervene to.
See that.
Yeah.
His eyes just kind of.
Well, he said, I kind of took a lot of wind out of the sail, but. I noticed that, and he kind of brought to my attention, he says, the irony of it is, and a state senator's dad in there. Beating you guys up, when a state senator could have done something to help this group out. But failed to take a, take that flag up and run with it. I said, that's kind of where we're, as a board, are faced with stuff that we can't change because state law.
And federal.
And federal law. Is telling, he asked me why, I said, well, I hypothetically, I would say a lot of campaign finance. Is being pushed in a certain direction, so.
And we'd like to do more, I, I wish we had more home rule and, and local authority, but.
I just don't know, yeah, I don't know. I was hoping he would maybe, through discussion, at least have a little. Bend in the corner of a page, we could exploit a little bit. But I, I just don't, I have not.
And everybody, everybody, you know, like you brought up, but everybody I talked to, even outside of our local area. Or just anything we was gonna try, was gonna basically see what Shelby did, I mean, that's kind of like what everybody was.
And the sad thing is, you're right, Kyle. The Senate had the chance to take up and at least discuss eminent domain. And they did not.
Made a hell of a bill.
And Steve did, and the Senate dropped the ball and just did not have any political will to even do something.
I thought for commercial development, that was probably, I'd like to see it more of a ninety-five, five, but you know, ninety-ten was. You know, at least given us a. Given the voice to the people, how's that?
They just failed to do it, which, so that puts us five at a bad spot. Because we're like their last defense, and we really don't.
Yeah, I get it.
We're facing the United States military with a T-spoon.
It's getting to the point where their, their fight, if they want to call it a fight, is not with us anymore, it's with I U B. I mean, there's not one of us here that are in favor of eminent do- domain, and I think we all would say, I don't know why. Summit thinks that they have to have a straight line, pipeline, they can curve it and go around people that if people don't want it. They shouldn't have to pave it on their land, so now we don't have anything to do with that eminent domain, I would kill these four dozen, so I mean, that's, to me, that's where they need to go.
Could we, as a board, I mean, I'd be. Make no difference, but draft another letter again, expressing and re-expressing our concerns about eminent domain.
I think that'd be a good idea.
We could. You know, the thing is, is even the summit people said that they had to lay out their, their route. To begin with, and they can't hardly deviate from that very much. You know, there, there are exceptions where they can, but they're, they're very limited in their deviation. And maybe that's part of the problem, why you can't get around the Tims or the Crudos or anybody else, you know, I mean. You, you just, they're, they're limited by I U B, so I mean. Because we don't know, I don't know all I U B's rules, I mean, but you look, I don't, you get all them emails, every time there's a motion filed or something? My email box has just been smoking lately.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of going on.
The crazy thing with I U B is that it's a three-person board that is all pointed. You say you're, you're putting the fate of eminent domain and all these landowners in the hands of three people. And then, you know, you talk with Tim and, and someone, and how their processes can change, and they can move dates up to. Well, now we need, if you're gonna file against it, we need your, all your information sooner, and trying to, almost like it's catching people off guard and. Not following through the typical protocol, it's just.
I mean, that's also the, the legislature set up the I U B process, you know, many years ago, back in the seventies, I think, is when they set it up. So unless they change it.
Right.
It's, that's the way it is, and that's the rules that they, that they play with.
I really thought that the ninety-ten might have got a little more traction than it did out of the House.
What did it have out of the House? What, one, one no vote? Am I thinking of the right bill? It was a hu- overwhelmingly coming out of the House, that's why I couldn't, I couldn't, it just kind of blew my mind, it never even got out of committee in the Senate.
And when, and when you read through some of the lawsuit that Colin, you know, brought to our, our attention. Last week, did you read through there, and it kind of made it seem like the process is, is I, I am a pipeline, and I apply for a permit with I U B. And when I, in my applying, I put the, the route there. And if the I U B approves that, then I start with my public education going out there and having my meetings. And so it makes it seem like the I U B is approving the pipeline where it is. Because when they applied, here was my map, and the I U B said, yeah, okay, now go up and. They'll publicly tell the people like the process says you're supposed to do, and so, right, it gets down to. Where it is, is where it is.
Exactly right, and to me, that's what's making this a little bit difficult, I mean, what, what have we had typically, you know, with Tim and. And probably five people that are. They're consistent people, you know, that whether they're on Zoom or in, in the room here. I mean, it's, it's, it's just hard to imagine that we're having trouble getting around those five people because of, you know, because of the rule, the way the rules are run. That's the sad part.
From what I've seen of the map, that I've seen of, you may have made look, it wouldn't make. A hundred foot, one way to get that on somebody else's property.
Yeah.
Because they're usually going right down the middle of the section or on a section line. They're not cutting through other border, border.
And they're close to the edge, most of them.
The, the thing that concerns me also, though, you know.
They want to take a couple twenty-two and a half degrees and get us out of there.
You take a for-profit private company that can get granted access to put a pipeline in. And a landowner, landowner can say, have no say whatsoever. What happens next? What, what slippery slope are we gonna go down where another private company with billions of dollars comes and says, well, now I want a pipeline here. I want a transmission line there, and it, landowners have no say, and we're, all of a sudden we have. Companies crossing our ground left and right, do we really own the ground?
Well, how about windmills, solar fields, I mean, how long before that's a issue that we're dealing, I mean. I get that these things are important, but I don't think we need to be trampling on folks to get things done. You know, we, we tried to make things more amicable and even give our folks a little bit louder voices at the table. But the windmills, hopefully that don't ever get overruled, you know, but. But I, I, I don't think that what Shelby County was trying to do was a whole lot different. You know, for the Bible, I don't.
I don't know, it just makes you wonder the thought process of some of the people, because it could be that. Even though it's a private company, it's just for the greater good of the people, that lowering the emission rates is good for everyone. The lowering the carbon in the air is good for everyone, therefore.
That was interesting, we do, like Tim, you know, and up, he says, what does corn need to grow? So by taking all the carbon out of the state, we're gonna actually decrease our yields potentially, right?
That's a great point.
That was brought up at, at our local cough by some agronomists a while back, remember when acid rains were the big topic? Now we have to put sulfur on our fields because we don't have the acidity in the rain to support the sulfur needs for our corn crop.
You know, I think that, if you, if you don't mind me, but, and I think, I think the. The concentration of our cities, you remember some LA with all their smog? You know.
They don't have it anymore.
Well, you know, we did things that corrected that, and I think that if you, you continue to correct, I'm sure they're still pumping out more carbon than we are, just by the human. You know, so I think if you look at that, electric cars that aren't gonna be real reliable for us out here. In the wide open spaces, especially in the winter time, if them cities were doing more, you know, that might actually do more to fight carbon problems than pumping a bunch. A bunch of gas up to.
I mean, human innovation has solved many of the issues in the past, either climate or. Electrical or mechanical, human innovation, and to me, that's what the government needs to be subsidizing instead of subsidizing. Summit carbon, put carbon in the ground, let's come up with a better way to do it, that seems like awful, there's. Can be very expensive things that they do to try to fix our environment here. A lot of them are gonna be really stupid and cost us a lot of money.
Repair the rainforest or plant more trees, I mean.
Like the one young man wants to do, or the pipelines can stop.
Yeah, that poor gentleman, he planted trees and now he wanna knock them down, it's been a while, and I don't know how many black trees over there.
I just take an observation.
Sure, please do.
And I'm, I'm not pro or anti-pipeline. It's just funny when you talk about, wow, they need to do innovation, well, pipeline is.
Is it a smart innovation? Is there a better way to do it?
There's a question.
That's the question.
Is there? I mean, is there?
There is, according to some people, but nobody ever listens to them, most people.
But, you know, when I see a lot of, a lot of pushback against anything that, that. You know, there's the government promotion of some new thing, you know, oh, you know, it's, they wouldn't do it without, without the tax incentive, you know, they wouldn't even do it. Without taxes, and yeah, that's the point of the tax incentive, I mean, to say they wouldn't do it without a tax incentive is kind of the point that I got. Taxes, because they have to make something that's difficult to do a little easier to do.
Right, it gets to the point where if something doesn't, if it can't compete in the marketplace, should the government be subsidized? I mean, should they subsidize it until it competes, and at what point are they competing? What if they never compete and the government keeps giving them money? That doesn't make any sense at all, is it actually?
And that's the argument that Iowa corn would, would use, is that we need to do this to remain competitive.
But you know, I, I feel like, man, we haven't really tapped into fully other ways to sequester carbon as far as. Cover crops, buffer strips, tree farms. Industrial hemp, you know, that, all those things, if all of a sudden you have programs through the USDA that. Everybody plants a cover crop, how many thousands of acres of rye or cereal rye that would be sequestering carbon naturally? We haven't truly offered a program that would encompass that. Millions of tax credit for a pipeline.
We're not gonna solve the problems here today, I just thought I'd bring up that, I talked with Tim and.
Makes you think, though, so that's what we're after, inspires. Hold on, here, anyway, keep talking.
To get widespread option, though, you technically need to force people to do it, because a lot of people just don't do it.
But a farmer would do it if it. Helps their bottom line, I mean, if it covers the cost of doing it and they make something for doing it, I mean. Look at how much profit Summit or Navigator, any of those are gonna, I mean, profit, not just to break even. If farmers made profit off of doing a cover crop, that's your incentive.
Hey, wrapping that up, I think if they would give us some consensus or that they would help support any emergency response, I mean, that would help. Tim sleep better anyway. End game, but I don't, won't be, I think he's realistic enough where he, he may not ever win that fight, but he wants. Something to come good of this, coming to our county. Chris Gosh from Conservation, apparently we got two point five acres out by Oakbrook, that's designated a park. By a Bailey. Sharon, no, Cherry, Cherry. And they approached Chris and wanted to purchase that property from the county. It was brought up back in nineteen oh three about purchasing it, and at that time, same people. I don't believe so, but I think at that time Supervisor Alder said that there's only. Only certain ways property can be disposed of, and, and that the money would go into the general fund, so then at that time Director Lance said, well, we'll just drop it. And I was in talking to Barry, and we can't even find how we came across that property. As far as there's no deed that says it's county held property or nothing, so. And it did sound like Chris's conversation with Mrs. Bailey. She really didn't want it to go to a public auction, she just wanted to negotiate a price between us and.
How long would it be able to do that?
Without finding out how it's actually deeded, I don't even know how we can actually sell it. So, but it's designated as a park, so part of me says. At some point in time, it was designated for park, it probably maybe should be just left as such. And Paul, like, there was another tidbit back in ninety-three, the county drained the road and pushed some trees down and. Kind of how we got wrapped in and taken care of that. But we must have done. Eyes down on a road that has native trees on it and killed some flowers and. We, we became, we became caretakers of two point five acres in trade.
There should be an agreement, so is there an agreement there?
Well, you know, there's, here's the letter from. Oh, here by Glenn Vickers, okay, and here's the minutes from the meeting saying the county will take care of that. So I think with, with that being said. Hate to go against another board, I mean, at this point in time, with no, no deed to it at all, I figure we just as well. In my opinion, it'd be just left. Anyway, that was a band-aid that fixed the problem then, so I hate to tear that band-aid off and the wound still not be completely healed.
Is there any care taken that's going on with that?
I asked Chris, said we mow, he said mow a couple times, three times a year, four times a year, something with bush hog, so. I would drive out there and look at it, I didn't know it was there, but it's, it's right on the. West side of the road, if you go to the old Catholic cemetery. So.
Yeah, it's pretty clear here.
Yeah, it is.
It designated as a park for you guys to take care of. It designated as a park for you guys to take care of for the county to take care of.
Glenn Pollock put up a pretty legitimate, he was a naturalist type person that he is yet, so.
You know, there's, there's a few of those areas. You got the one up here, about right off of thirty-nine that, you know, you can't even get to now. The bridge isn't there, but it's just an area kind of designated for wildlife and to always remain. Wooded, natural area, you know, and and so that I think actually there was an easement given to the county for that. On file, but it's a good thing that that's there, you know, there's, there's the minutes in the meeting, so.
But that's all I know, so.
I don't know what precipitated all that or what caused it to happen, but you know, it's not bad having those little park areas like that. Oh, wildlife.
It's got trees and stuff on it, and you're just talking about having trees to help some mustard.
I don't think there's an entrance, there's no.
How's Chris get to it tomorrow?
Through the ditch or something.
Maybe we just need to put a public access and under something in order for people to actually utilize it.
Yeah, because I doubt many people know that that's maintained as a as a public use area, which is what that was intended to be. But sometimes a public use area is just a. An open space. Sign their crop property of Crawford County Parks. It says you take care of it, doesn't say you own it. That's a good point.
We really don't know, nearest American figure is that when they bought of the Oakbrook area for housing. The past owner who had, I don't know, who owned Oakbrook when it was ground or whatever, just that's probably, they're probably still in their name.
See, when I looked at it, it said Oak, was it Oak Park Association or something, so. So if you you kind of think about it like you said, you know, before it was subdivided into lots. They did break off lots, but then they had a public use area, and so like I told. I said, well, I think it's probably belongs to all of the owners of the association. As a, as a joint use area, they have to go look at the the subdivision, you know, usually when they dedicate that. They 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 spell that out in there and say this is intended to be used as a green space for all of the people out here. And and so, you know, it could just be how that dedication document read. Uh, you know, if you start going back and changing title, if that didn't happen, then whoever owned the property before they subdivided it. Still owns it, because you have to have a deed to transfer title.
Well, I heard somebody expanded in the nineties or something, I think early to the.
Association.
Association, so. Either they all own a little chunk of it, or they own none of it, that's back to the original property owner.
Those things just get tremendously expensive to try to.
At this point in time, there's no way we can sell that because we don't have no, no proper paperwork that says we own it.
You had to clear it up, you'd have all the people sign a quick claim deed, and then it would become the property, you know, you could. You could claim title to it as caretakers of it, perhaps if somebody ever wanted to clear that up, you just have to have them all quit claiming any interest in it. And perhaps the previous owner and.
Sure, you know, there's not on the tax roll yet.
No, because I couldn't find any report on it. I clicked on it and just. You know, there's nothing, and not that it's gonna generate a lot of taxes right down either, but. Well, do you have anything? What's that? Thank you, sir. You have the floor. Got a grand. Yeah, I think that was really, really interesting, so glad everyone was able to go. So. Pretty enlightening. Yeah, it gives you some insight as to what all takes place to get material on the road here. And to all that gravel is one inch gravel underground. No, it's just not there waiting for us to come and pick it up. We had a hundred and ninety lumps yesterday, so it was a good day. Really, so, you know. I had to go to hell and goin', there was a, I don't know where you were getting the trucks then, because there was a slug of them running back and forth. Carol run the chain was talking about. Yeah, so it's, it's, it's going real well. We should be done with Stratford and Ragby's coming through next Monday through that area, so. We're not gonna haul no matter what. And if we, we can't go to Wool Lake, well, we can't, because Wool Lake's not gonna be running, because all their people are going, working with Dragway or something, so. So we won't be hauling Monday, but hopefully we'll be done on Stratford this week. First time we got this, Kelly Eric down there is running a water line in that Orange Electric interduct underneath the P Avenue. So I just need to prove that, and since it's liquid, you guys have signed that, proved that. The, 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 the volley has been back to Graves' consulting engineer. That's where we're at. Usually try to give him a few days before I pass him again, but I know they, we all understand the sense of urgency. There's like four copies there. We want you, we want you signature. Through all of them here.
Since you're so good at it, just keep on signing.
So that's kind of where we're at, so if I don't hear anything by the end of the day to day, I'll probably call tomorrow. So. We're making more progress, hopefully. The Manel maintenance shop again, we get the pad ready, that's just kind of a hold. The guy's working on D Avenue, nice looking crate again, if you grew up in that area, so for yesterday. Continue to do some really good work. That's, that's going well. And I wanted to just visit, we don't have a lot of items here today, but the cell phone situation, so. So, the way it's been for a number of years is we have a few of the employees, the format Casey. We got a puck through wireless communication, but it's all been run through the county's phone. It actually, it's been very cost effective. We do have some problems periodically, and I know I talked to Michelle about it in this morning. You know, with the phones operating like they're supposed to talk and text on them, but then they have problems with the apps. Like the weather app, things, they're not working, they're being really slow. They're a little older version of the cell phone because they're free. But as we go into the timekeeping, and we're working, you know, to implement fleet management. Which is either gonna take a tablet, you know, the, the, the first year, we're gonna probably have the guys continue to keep track of their stuff on a pen and paper. Till everybody gets familiar with the input process on the administrative end. And once everybody gets familiar with it, we'll kind of open it up and have everybody doing it, so this might take a year and a half before we get to that point, but. My point is, is that. You know, maybe we want to look at. You know, and there's some drawbacks to that, like Sean pointed out, he said, God, he said, if I can get rid of my county phone, all my numbers are on my county phone. How do I get those transferred to my personal phone if we haven't, you go this route? This is all discussion, I'm not really. Advocating or pushing, I'm just looking for solutions as we move forward into this electronic. Timekeeping, electronic, complete management type thing. And Kathy was gonna delve into, you know, some other counties, they pay stipends to their, to their employees, I don't know if any, I don't know if all employees would want that. So might not want to use their personal phone, but at some point in time, we're gonna have to have that communication between. An electronic device or in the outlaw shops and central location, collect timekeeping information.
Currently, do a lot of employees have two phones, a personal phone or?
Well, the only ones are the county ones, I'm the only one, I think Tim. Tim, I think he's on a county phone too. I've never had a county phone. I've just always used my personal phone. Because I don't want to carry two phones. It's big enough to carry one. But those guys do, they'll all carry two phones. So yeah, just something to think about, because again, to get, to get some, some thoughts going.
I don't sell them in certain places, the last month has just been poor.
Spits body. Wonder if there's just been somewhere that tower. Shouldn't have rocks, or we got a tower right in our backyard.
Yeah, and I got like a half a bar of service live there in the house somewhere.
Yeah, you know, it could be bandwidth, which is, you know, basically the capacity, you know. They'd be used so much more with all the technologies.
I think, see, that's a lot of it, because nine, ten o'clock at night is a lot better.
You can do whatever you want, and the kids get off their devices, I mean, you know.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. Is, what percent of employees do you think have a smartphone currently?
At least maybe one or two.
And all, all new people you hire, they all got.
They got one, yeah, and so, you know, honestly, we have the radio system. But I bet you, I hardly ever hear anything on the radio, that radio system's important to have, we got radios on all of our equipment. Especially in the winter. Especially when you're in a storm event, whether it's winter, it's, it's, you, you have that direct right away, you have that communication, so. Yeah, so it's, it's important, because you can talk to the whole group, you know, like we got a tornado touchdown, you know, west to down left. Hey, hey, all units, tornado just touched down, finds, find, you know, that's just a great way to communicate, although.
It happens.
With the technology today, most people know, because of their phones and they're getting alerted, you know, that's changed, it's changed. And how it's affecting your group in particular is important to every one of them, and I need to run to the aid and so. Yeah, yeah, so the radios are important, but we do find ourselves using cell phones. Majority of the time, you just want to call a guy and say, hey, so-and-so called, they want her, you know, a little word or something. You know, the radio.
Drake researched to find an app that we can put on everybody's phone or.
He, he, I talked to him about cellphone, you know, personal cellphone usage, he didn't see any problem with it, he said like the timekeeping app, you know, we. I think an app would work great. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's I work, that's what we're looking at, is we install that app on the phone. You know, I don't want to introduce that to everybody right away, because I just think, you know, we're gonna have a worksheet that they fill out. In hand, and we'll have one person inputting the initial. Smithfield actually uses an app for all of our paperwork for the truckers. I mean, on the livestock end, I mean, that works, the guys at first were like, oh, something else staffed. Once they got it, it's made life simple.
Do you think?
Then you have to get another truck at the plant.
Or is to get a tablet, please shop, shop or something, because you'll be able to do your fleet man and tanky, you know, that same tab.
And, and that might be where we end up, okay, there's a tablet, you know, voyeur doesn't have the greatest service in the world, correct? So we may have to try to get internet there, you know, but, but. You know, yeah, they could come in, that, that probably be the solution, just like what Terry's got right here, you know, you have something sitting at your, at your desk, you come in and you. Put in fifteen or you don't, it's five gallons of fuel, you put in fuel you use to take care of your payroll, your time. But when you got two apps, you just pull them up, you're done, so that's what I envision at some point in time.
So I would too, I think I just. Starts in my, right now, you know. Start paying a stipend, employees use their personal phone, then if you call them. After hours or whatever, they'll ask, answer, and they're like, hey, we're paying you to have that phone, I mean, that answer, I think.
You know.
I don't, I just.
Yeah, and you know, our guys. They could just, you know, they could just not answer, but, I mean, most of the guys, when I call them afterward, they answer their phone. You know, I think it's just kind of understood that things happen, you know, sometimes it's unpredictable, but, you know, we had this.
Nine and ten, I was about ready to quit answering the phone.
Yeah. Yeah.
But, you know.
But it's just part of what we do, you know, you're always, can understand, you know, that you could be getting a phone call. And so, I'm not advocating anything here, okay, I really am not, I'm just fostering, trying to get some discussion. What, what I would say is that right now, when we do have issues with the cell phones, it's extremely difficult to get. From, to get it resolved, and Sean had some issues with his, and this is no fault of anybody here, it's just, it's, it's the nature of what we all deal with. I think he's been an hour or more waiting in online, and it was at least an hour, and then, you know, Damon and him are both having trouble. With their phones now, and their apps are not working properly, so they have to come in here, and they still have to spend time waiting for a service tech to. To, to address it, so it's a little bit. Difficult to get things resolved, and it's no fault of anybody here, it's just the nature of what we're dealing with. The system, you know, how it is, everybody deals with it, you call it, whatever it is, claims gesture, you wait, and wait, and wait, and wait, you know, and. So that's kind of, we're having some issues, and I don't know how best to resolve it. I just talked to Monty Creighton. He called over, so back in oh four. The legislature passed a bill that transferred any farm-to-market extension. Into a community with a population of five hundred or less to the county, okay? So that impacted a number of our communities, Vanilla, Dow City, Charter Oak, and slash week. Are the four that don't meet that test, Dow City did, you just got, let's see, did I say, yeah, Vanilla? Slash week, Charter Oak. Yeah, Vale's smaller, yeah, so Dow City was transferred to us a year ago, so we inherited basically the jurisdictional responsibility for those road. So, so in a number of those communities, I went to them and I said, you know, when they did the legislate, the legislation. The, the state DOT, when they go through a community, all they take care of is the travel portion of the roadway. You know, take care of the side drainage, the sidewalks, any of that stuff, it's just the travel portion of the roadway, generally speaking. When they do this legislation, it's from headway to headway, they didn't define that, that all we were supposed to take care of was just the roadway. So I went to some of these communities, we entered into agreements with them, and said, okay, will you take care, you know, what do you want, you know? We can't, we can't divest ourselves from that responsibility, all we can do is transfer maintenance responsibility. That makes sense to you, whether, whether we do the maintenance on it, or the city does the maintenance on it or whatever. It's still, those roadways are our responsibility, period. I know some counties just said, well, we have to transfer that all to the city. No, you didn't, because you can't undo it with the legislature, all you're doing is you're transferring maintenance responsibilities, and we could hire contractors. So, so we went through and we worked out these agreements, I kind of developed this formula, so, so that we kind of narrowed that down, and then. The cities that entered into that agreement, they take care of the things outside of the paved roadway, and they're all a little bit unique, but. So then we give them some of the money back. Okay, we, we worked out a formula, and we give them these checks, and you see these checks from Crawford County to the cities for F M transfers, that's what that is. So Vale wanted to actually keep some of their streets, they're like three or four blocks, because they kind of, they're, they're more, they really are more. Of a city street than they are a farm-to-market connection, and so they, they wanted the money, so each year we give them back several thousand dollars. Five, six thousand dollars, well, now those three blocks, they're about, so. Needing some major repairs, and to the tune of about thirty thousand dollars a block. And so Monty was just on the phone, he says, is there any way the county can help with those? They are farm-to-market extensions, we did transfer that over, you know. I said, come talk to the board, you know, and that's where I would start, so they are still our jurisdiction. They are our responsibility, they've just taken care of the maintenance for us, so that makes sense to everybody, so we can't. I think so, yeah, I don't know what, I haven't looked at them, but.
Did we pay them any different than we did anybody else for those farm-to-market?
They, they, they kind of took over the responsibility, so, so, yeah, they need, no, no one else took streets, they said, hey, we'll take care of these streets. They said, we'll take care of the sidewalks, we'll take care of mowing, trimming trees, you know, we'll take care of that stuff. Vale actually said, we'll take care of these streets, we'll plow the snow, we'll do whatever minor maintenance is done, is needed, so. So now they need. They need more than just that, so.
Seems to me like, I don't know the formula, but the money provided to these communities for the farm-to-market extensions was never. Seems to me like, I don't know the formula, but the money provided to these communities for the farm to market extensions was never. Really enough to compensate for a major repair. No, I mean, you'd have to save your money for twenty plus years to pay for it.
Pay for it.
Yeah. So it's not doing anything to any other streets.
Right.
It's a you the little unique, you know, we're probably not going to get carried away and, you know, we'll have to kind of. Decide what's the appropriate expenditure on that, you know, as far as.
In the past, Craig, I think we've done stuff similar with other communities, like. That we've spent the money and they pass back every after so many years, they just. Slash week was one of them, some of that stuff, going through the town, playing asphalt now. So it's just it's we can come up with a solution. Did you look at the repairs that are needed?
I haven't been over there yet. He just called. They just.
He's gonna go over and give us, I wanted to give you a little history on kind of how.
How this whole thing evolved. So.
I mean, we know you're you're very frugal with our dollars. If you could give us some advice on what helping them with consistent.
Yeah.
I'd appreciate it.
They're gonna do their bridge project done.
Yeah, I didn't even ask about that. I just just yeah, that one.
What is that? This lunch leaving dog gliding?
Yeah. So anyhow.
One year you wanna, I got another call from Mr. Me Sunday evening. Down there sometimes. Oh, yeah, we can go down there this afternoon or something.
Yeah, let let me know. Are you gonna do a hold him in and set it or something? Anytime Saturday or.
Well, yeah, I can call him. All right.
Me.
I don't know if we need him there or not, but.
Oh, if you, yeah, that's fine with me. But I will tell you, we did meet with him, named Chris. And Bryce and I told him I said, we'll put aggregate up to the top of this hill to control erosion, fix the, there was a washout. I said, we'll fix that. But it's a level road. I don't know that more as complete grading because it's dead ends goes back there and just dead ends. So. Can you rest? Yeah.
Let's get out of here.
Let me know.
Yeah, I got a quick question for you, Lee.
Sure.
I was up doing some of my driving around yesterday on my way back and. You come down the, what what number are we? One thirty there to up your road to the cemetery?
Well, one forty.
One forty. All right. The grab the dirt part. Have we ever looked? That looks to me like that'd be the biggest challenge in Crawford County to make eat them banks away. The one that comes from rickets or, you know, from Pat. Have you ever looked at, I mean, I was driving there and kind of looked. In that bank? So that's that would be a big challenge too then, huh? I mean, I was just looking at them them banks and I thought, holy crap, how far back in the field would we have to go on that?
If you. Really? No, if you. That's probably very close to what one thirtieth south, the towers, the the tower that we put up.
Yeah.
That road.
You think that was that bad? Was that was that bad?
Really?
Oh.
Yeah, that was that was probably one of the worst.
I don't remember that.
Yeah.
I never drove with that.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, I mean.
I'm just, I'm sure it could be done. I just was kind of looking at that thing and some of the banks were like. You could lose my truck on your stand. You could look straight across and not see the top of the trail.
You'd be amazed at things that are buried that road.
I've been digging through them banks.
Yeah.
March or February of one ten or two thousand ten to get R E C through there.
Yeah.
I think we spent there and I spent a day on, got halfway through that.
So terrible. Yeah.
That just looks like a bad drift shot.
Well, it'll be level. Yeah. That's why we don't open level B roads in the winter time. And now the ones that would be great.
You think a man hours and dollars would be wasted fuel on a road like that?
I said, we spent a day and we got halfway through.
Right. And then.
We had to go back the next day and start over again.
Yeah, that's the problem with those, the windows to them.
Everybody was out of power and everybody wanted power. So we were doing all we could do to facilitate.
Wow. Okay. Well, that was my only question. Thanks. Next on the agenda. Appointment to appointment of Sherry Vaughn to the Region Twelve Housing Authority Board Director. For a term of October first, twenty twenty two.
About twenty twenty three.
It says twenty two, but.
I know, it's twenty three. I mean, unless you want to reappoint her for a term that's almost over. But the document is correct.
Okay, well, that's what.
Yeah, that's what.
And then that'd be through twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
Look at me catch up.
You are good.
Zoom, zoom.
I'd make that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Mulbauer makes the motion. Mr. Dozark seconds the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state so by saying aye. Oppose no, chair votes aye. Discuss and take action liquor license veterans honor flight.
This is that Wolfie's bash.
Okay, there you go.
We're making a motion to approve the liquor license for veterans honor flight. And Wolfie's bash.
Mr. Schultz makes the motion.
Just for the letters.
Veterans honor flight. Mr. Dozark or Mr. Schultz makes the motion and Mr. Dozark seconds a further discussion. All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, chair votes aye. Discuss, take action. Sharon and Amira Treasure, parcel number zero one three six three five one zero zero three, assigned county health certificate. C H one seven zero zero two zero six to Todd Jepson.
Okay, I've still been working on trying to get some more county health tax certificates on the back on the tax roll. So if you look at the map, you can kind of see an L. It was kind of hard to draw. That that's what Todd already owns. That little white building up there in the corner is the post office. So it's that little tract of land sitting between reliance construction and post office. Um, Todd, when he purchased this, he thought he already owned that and he's been taking care of it. Um, so when I found out that it was on the county health tax search itself, I asked him if he was interested in possibly taking ownership to that so we can get it back from tax roll. And he said he'd be very interested. Um, we would be abating like right now, it's only a hundred and sixty five dollars. Um, I don't know if Bert would come forward once he realizes somebody else might take it and clean that up. But, I mean, it just makes sense for Todd to have it because he's got the stuff around it as well.
Nine and sixty five dollars is penalty interest.
It's it's all back taxes. Yeah. So I would ask that we would abate those and just get this to Todd and like I said, get back on the tax roll. Now, where it says tax sale, that's his, that's it sold. It was his and it's sold on a tax sale. I'm not sure who Bert got it from.
That's less in line with what we've previously done to get properties back on tax roll.
Okay, well, I would entertain a motion to uh. Approve the uh, statement of those. Motion was made by Mr. Dozark, second by Mr. Mulbauer. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, chair votes aye.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you for getting those back on tax roll.
That time.
I just let it happen.
He'll try like three quarters records.
Okay, discuss, take action. Amy Piper, is she here?
Yes, she is. I can see her.
Amy.
Amy, you're up.
Oh, sorry.
That's your name.
They're coming where?
Yeah, did you see that?
I just seen a glimpse of it. I didn't call you too.
Do you know Jack Kader? That's his pilot. He was a fighter pilot.
Cool.
From DC. Dow City.
Dow City.
Not Washington.
All right, workman's comp income replacement.
Did you guys make a decision?
Well. We do have, Jack is technically he is on Zoom right now. Would like to just hear what he's dealing with or what he sees with other counties. Jack, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, sir.
Just like, since you're HR consultant, um, hear from you of what you see other counties doing in this regards.
Okay, are you hearing me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, well, let me just kind of answer that question for you and and. Lay out, you know, what my involvement has been with this handbook issue because I'm not sure what the discussion was last week and. So I thought I should explain, you know, where my company's at with this because first of all is is that. Uh, we're not advocating one way or the other about what the board does with this situation in making an adjustment in the way that. They deal with work comp payments for employees. Um, when the auditor's office contacted me and said that, you know, they were going to need to make a change in this area, as I just said, well, let me know. What the change is and then, you know, we can write it up and let you take a look at it, take it to the board and have them okay it. Um, when I found out that uh, or was told, you know, when the they were going to change the method of um. Payment to the employees, uh, then my question was is is this the, is the county going to allow a. Supplement to the work comp payment? And the answer was no. Okay. And then. So what I think is important is is why I asked that question. Why I asked that question is is that. One is that's kind of the norm with the other counties, at least the ones, all the ones I represent. Uh, it is. And two is is that um, the county actually has been in essence paying that. Uh, approximately thirty five percent extra to the employees because they didn't pay them one hundred percent. So that's why that I asked that question. And I, what I don't know is is that. Uh, in the past, when the county's been paying that hundred percent, which is includes that thirty five percent. Above their work comp payment is, I don't know whether whether or not that they were. Charging for that or whether they weren't charging crudely for that. I I don't know. That doesn't really make any difference. But I just wanted you to know why I asked the question and and I told you what those two things were is one is it's kind of the norm. Among my counties and two is is that the county has been paying that thirty five percent and just in a different manner.
My concern, Jack, initially was. Is the sixty five percent of workman comp enough to cover their take home pay? What they are used to getting.
Sixty five percent.
Sixty five percent, but it's not taxed.
Tax free.
Right.
So.
Because if you do all their deductions, they're basically making sixty five percent. Did you hear that, Jack?
And we don't take any deductions out of the work comp.
Work comp.
No, work comp pays them.
Deduction free.
So basically their their check is equal to what they're used to. And if we give them more, it is.
More is more, right.
Pretty much.
Part will be not taxed and our part has to be taxed.
Right.
So you mentioned the benefits if they're on health insurance, work comp pays directly for their health insurance?
No, no.
Okay.
No, so. So.
So what happens? How do we deduct for their health insurance if they're on workman's comp?
So right now, because we're using sick leave, the deductions are being taken out. So not having sick leave or anything like that. We would have to kind of put on hold. Their deduction because we can't bring, you know, we can't get money from them because. Like, you know, just write a check because that's not, that's after tax. So we would basically just, you know, kind of. Have a tally of what they owe and when they come back. I mean, typically what most employers do, do some kind of when they come back. You know, kind of like a budget plan to get caught up. I mean, obviously, if we're just talking a month. That's not that bad. But six months, they're probably going to have to do a budget plan. They're not going to be able to come up with twenty four hundred dollars. Or twelve hundred dollars. So, yeah.
I yeah, otherwise we're actually rewarding them for getting injured if we're giving them extra, you know, on the on the flip side of what you're saying. We don't want to punish them because they got injured, but we also don't want to reward them for being injured.
Right. And I think that's what.
County's dime.
And that's what Paul's issue was in the past. And that's why they. Changed it to this other way because way back when, way before me, way before, I think Terry, maybe, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But they did it that way. They did the sixty five percent plus did income replacement. And the problem Paul was having where where people didn't want to come back because they were making more money not working. And so it, you know. It was counterproductive. I'm trying to get people back to work and that's your mod factor changes or, you know, it it affects all these other different things.
I mean. It's a kind of makes you wonder, as an employer, do you want to give your employee the option of saying, hey, this is my paid time off? I can take it either as vacation, as a day here or day there, or if I want to use it to subsidize, well, I'm on workman's comp. Why can't I have that option to do that? Why would you tell me I can't do that? It's my money. I'm just taking it now. I mean, that's right. Is that basically?
And that would be the policy is that they're on workman's comp, there is no replacement. You you're on workman's comp, you're getting a check from them. And when you come back. Then you can take vacation, you can do whatever you want. But when you're on workman's comp, you're getting money from them, not from the county.
But is it, but to your point, it's your sick time already occurred. So you're using your sick time to supplement.
And that is where we're talking. Do we want to allow? Yeah, that's that's what this has been. That's what we're asking. Do you want to do that or not?
Both sides of it. It's like, can we have a policy that says they may use sick time to. Cover benefit or stuff of that nature because. I remember it was like winter of two thousand and eleven. I was the first one that like January that had to come in on the.
Light duty.
Light duty. The previous county guy smashed his little finger and he had like a month off. I came in with a broken leg. I was back to work the next day. So I remember that transition very well. And I wasn't very happy at the time. I thought, geez, I got a broken leg. I'm gonna get six weeks off. And I was back in the next day working.
So why could you? Why could the other guy be off?
Because that he was the reason, not he personally, but that was. The reason our mod factor was high because he had three weeks off because he had a black and blue finger now.
And that is what we're talking, that's what was Paul's concern. If you go back to doing an income replacement, they're making more money when you're. You're letting them use sick leave, vacation, whatever, while they're off getting that check from workman's comp because they're getting sixty five percent from workman's comp. And then they're using sick leave, vacation, whatever. And even if you try to do, just give them thirty five percent, that's not how it works out. It, you know, because that's just not how it works out. That's why they were making more money and albeit. Could have just been fifty dollars, hundred dollars, but. That adds up in a month or whatever and some people, that's enough for them to say, well, I don't want to go back to work because I'm making more money sitting here.
And part of.
That's.
Workman's comp is to, I mean, maybe they have supplemental insurance to have by because I'm going to benefit them also somehow.
Right. And my my fear was somebody has a shoulder surgery because of an accident and is out for. Six months and says, hey, sixty five percent, I'm two hundred dollars short of a month. I mean, I I get the overpay, but I also. I mean, I, I get the overpay, but I also.
Right.
Don't want to short our employees for having a.
You shouldn't be short.
Shouldn't be.
Spending money.
Yeah, because.
The, the only thing that I'd like to bring up then is is the time that would have been working, there's nothing that's covering.
Just remember, this is injuries related to work, this ain't something that, they had a
Right, right.
A worn out knee or something and decided to get it fixed, I mean, that's getting paid on it, that'd be on a.
Tell them, workman's comp won't cover that anyways.
So.
Like a torn rotator cuff, like you said, that, that, that requires.
It'll be off.
Right.
But not necessarily either, cause there's also light duty work, they can bring them back in, take, take tickets and, and stuff to.
And work comp supplements some of that.
Sit in a chair and count people that walk through the door.
Do they still supplement some of that?
Mm-hmm, if they come back to work, and then, yeah, they're still getting it done.
Working and getting their, their deductions paid still.
Right.
See, that's the only thing that worries me is if they would be off, just say, like Kyle brought up or Dave brought up, the, the, the three month period and their deductions aren't getting paid and now when they come back, they gotta catch them up, that would be, that would be an undue burden or maybe not undue, but it would be a burden.
Be able to stretch that out a little bit to get that accomplished in a less painful manner.
Right, that's why I was saying, I wouldn't just, oh, you're back, now I'm gonna take out twelve hundred dollars.
Zip up the next three paychecks so we can.
We're gonna shake our wood.
We wouldn't do that. Right.
Long as we're not doing that.
And then, so, you know, back to the sixty-five percent, deductions are not coming out, so if you take someone's paycheck and you take out all those deductions, you take out the, the taxes, all of that, you are not taking home sixty-five percent of the tax.
If you're making a thousand dollars a month by the time you take out your federal, your state, your social security, Medicare.
A hundred and seventy-eight dollars for at least health, thirty-five percent of your pay.
You're down to six hundred. You're down to six hundred and fifty, you go on workman's comp by making six hundred and fifty.
Right.
So my take home pay is the same as it was before, I'm not gonna be short the two hundred dollars or whatever a month. The thing I'm just gonna make up is gonna be your health insurance, longer you're out.
Right, right.
The county's gonna have to work with you to get that.
And your tax return's gonna look a little different because you are gonna have a lot of, some money in, that you're receiving untaxed. So that's, that's the nature of the beast, that's what work comp is, yes.
Bring our mod factor down, I don't know what it was at that time, but it was probably at one point five or whatever, down to like the lowest in the state. So maybe we're not, we'll be the only county that acted this way, but.
I don't think we are.
No.
We are not.
We may not be, we may be, that's neither here nor there, but I hate to see that jeopardize that anyway to where that starts pushing back up to where we can't even afford to have insurance.
Correct.
You know, cause it was crazy, and I'm around school board, I know what it's like to be dropped, cause your workman's comp was at a two some.
Exactly.
Who decides how long you're on workman's comp?
The doctor.
The doctor himself.
Yeah. I think through correspondence with the workman's comp people, they, they work.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they stay in communication with those people.
Yeah, I think mine was like, yeah, light duty restricted to A, B, or C, you know, if you can't do that, then there's no B.
Violating your insurance.
Right. So.
Hey, I actually learned that a lot, like my truck drivers.
I think it's best, we just move forward, but.
They uh, really drive a lot of light duty jobs for me, but I figured out some because I kept my mod factor from going crazy, so, yeah.
You know, I don't think.
We're saying, it's a problem, it's really life, with a doctor, cause if they can extend workman's comp.
Well.
Through.
Let an employee can also, and I'm not saying anyone has, I'm not saying anyone would, but they could say, oh, but I still hurt, or, you know, I'm, if they know they're making more money sitting at home, I would imagine a smashed finger did really not need four weeks off work.
It looked like.
I'm just guessing, I'm guessing, I don't know, I've never smashed my finger.
I'll do a broken leg.
You went to the wrong doctor. They go to, they go to the work comp doctor.
Yeah.
They.
I went to the one they said.
The one approved, yes.
So what, what is the pleasure of the board?
Jack, is there any thoughts on that, of hearing our discussion as far that you have? That you see with your county, other counties, and the road, uh, what we're talking about taking?
Well, well, just one comment here is, is that when you're having the discussion about whether or not an employee on work comp wants to come back or work, worker or not, that's not dictated by the work comp payment, that's dictated by the medical provider that's saying whether or not that employee is able to come back to work and then whether or not that, that employee is able to come back to work with restrictions and then, at that point, it's more or less up to the department head whether or not they can accommodate that employee in a light duty situation and then, and then if so, then the department head can offer the employee light duty, you, under the law, you have to do that in, in a certain way and then uh, if the employee, and they usually do not, if they uh, reject doing the light duty offer, then it, it, it puts their work comp payment at risk. So it doesn't, it's not really dictated by whether or not they're getting a work comp payment or even how much they're getting, it's dictated by the medical provider and then again, the department head makes a decision if they can accommodate him somehow.
Do you see that sixty-five percent of workman comp pay is equivalent to their actual take home pay?
Well, it, it's a little fuzzy to me, uh, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I guess what I understood was is that uh, the employees were getting their work comp payment, which is approximately sixty-five percent of their regular income and then in the past is they've been signing that check, turning it over to the county and then the county's been writing them a check for uh, what their regular pay is, which would include the other thirty-five percent. Um, that's, that's what I understood they were doing. Um, and so, that's why I said that that if that's true, then the county's been paying them the extra thirty-five percent.
Cause that's what is unlawful, that's what we found out.
So that is unlawful, Jack?
That is what I.
Yeah.
They said, you cannot do it this way anymore.
But they've been getting their pay with taxes removed from it, so it has to, it's pretty close to that sixty-five percent you would get from your workman's comp paycheck, so. Not gonna, you see a huge difference of any.
I mean, and it was very by employee, because not all the employees have family insurance, have, you know, all the deductions, so it, it just depends on their deductions.
That's, I mean, honestly, that's just my biggest fear, that the sixty-five percent isn't enough to cover what their take home pay is, and they've already, it's their accrued sick leave.
I'm gonna guess, I mean, I, I'm gonna guess, someone that has insurance, their workman's comp is gonna be, probably be a little bit more than even what their check would be, because of all of the deductions.
I hate to punish all the people that are doing it right and wanting to get back to light duty or work or what, because one guy or one person abused it and tried to stay longer, but we're dictating that we're gonna also not allow them to use your accrued sick leave for all the people that want to do it right.
Right, right, and I think again, that's why workman's comp uses that sixty-five percent, because you know, in, in an average scenario, that thirty-five percent, they're, they're looking at all your deductions and taxes and all of that stuff, so they're saying, okay, this is probably about what you're taking home, sixty-five percent.
So Amy, how, how long have you been here?
I have been here for ten years.
So on average, how many people annually do we have?
Not even one, I mean, we, maybe one?
Maybe.
I mean, there's been, I think, some time that we had none, so this is where I said we are very lucky because we truly, it's, we don't have that many claims, to be honest, so I mean, so we might have a nurse that sticks themselves with a needle and they go, just, you know, make a claim, but they're not even off work, so, you know, honestly, we really don't have that many.
Just a hospital is a claim, not a time off.
Right, right, right.
So whatever we do is not gonna affect.
Right, very many people, but right now, the way we're doing it, we can't do, right, you know?
Exactly, exactly.
So we gotta make some.
And it sounds like what Jack has said is that the majority of these counties just do the sixty-five percent, that's it.
Yep.
Yep, is that correct, Jack?
Uh, no, um, a- all of my counties except for one do the supplement to the sixty-five percent.
All of them.
All of them.
I see.
There's a word that that's changing.
And ailers were saying the other way, that they, majority of theirs don't do the, the supplement.
But doing the supplement's illegal.
No, the way we're doing it.
The way we're doing it, because the way we're doing it, we are taking their check, they're signing over their workman's comp check and then we are paying them through their sick leave, they're using their sick leave to.
For the entire.
For the entire amount.
Oh, okay, so we're.
So that's what we're not, so, yeah.
Either we do only allow them to take workman's comp at sixty, workman's comp at sixty-five percent or to legally do it, we can allow them to use the sixty-five percent and then backfill it or fill in the other thirty-five percent with their accrued sick leave, right?
Right. Exactly.
Okay.
That's the truth.
And then that's taxed. At thirty-five percent. Okay, so what's the pleasure of the board?
Hold on, last comment, I just don't want to see us get in a spot where our mod factor slowly starts to rise again, although we're fortunate, we're not very affected by a lot of these, you know, but apparently at one time we were, to where our mod factor was stupid high.
Yeah.
Our workman's comp insurance was through the. I mean, we're setting estimates of, I think, like two hundred thousand dollars, like, ran that mod factor down, so, real money. So, my opinion is, we would go just the sixty-five percent, no supplement, cause as we start pushing forward, and it's all a great concern of ours, what is going to be the future in regards to money? Now, this is one way to continue to keep our mod factor low and keep our insurance costs reasonable, but.
You gonna make that a motion?
You talk me into it, I would say we, I would, I don't know, I haven't even thought about how to word that yet, but I would make a motion to approve the workman's comp with no replacement, just the work, I don't know, that's trying not.
Straight work. No, no additional funding.
No supplement.
No additional supplement.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schultz and second by Mr. Dozart to continue on with simply uh, the uh, workman's comp and no supplemental assistance, which would still, and anyway, that's what it is. Uh, is there any further discussion?
I just like, say, real fast, I, I get where you're coming from, I do, I, I just feel like being at over ten years, we don't, haven't had but a handful, that it's not gonna affect our mod factor, could potentially down the road, something we could always address, um, I feel like it's their accrued sick leave that they've earned. Um, maybe the sixty-five percent is equivalent to their take home pay. I just don't want to go down the road and have somebody with an injury that's not their fault, not be able to use your own accrued sick leave to make up that difference.
What is that sick leave intended for, since we're on further discussion, I mean, i- it's intended for sick, like if you're, you know, you gotta go to the hospital.
Flu, whatever, being sick.
Being sick.
Doctors.
So we burn up that on.
Yeah, you get eight days a year of the active time for family.
So granted, you could use that for that, but, I mean.
But there's options to do so.
Right.
So it requires, you're saying, sick leave is different than vacation time?
Yeah.
So, um, first year guy.
Tended to be different, yeah.
First year guy, how many days of vacation do I acquire and how many days of sick leave do I acquire?
Your first, your second year, your first year, you get zero, your outer year, first year, you get forty hours.
Forty hours.
You're talking vacation right now.
Vacation, sick leave, they would be getting, they would be earning twelve.
So much? One point.
They get twelve hours a month.
One and a half days.
Yeah.
To maximumly accrue at what level?
They, they can max out at ninety days, or ninety days of sick leave on the, on the books. So basically, it almost takes about eight years to, seven, eight years to accumulate ninety days of sick leave on the books and eight of those days can be used for family, so if you're a spouse, children, per year. But it comes out of the same bucket, you don't have like an additional eight days.
Right, what is the carryover from year to year?
Right, carryover for.
Total sick leave.
It, you can always carry over.
Always carry over.
Yeah, but once you, once you get to ninety days, it converts four sick days to one vacation day.
So, that being said, by them not taking their, just another full good, by not taking their sick days, they're not really necessarily losing, they're, they're not losing out, they're just, that's a savings account almost. Cause even though you bring that full lot in a sick leave to your retirement party, the county will cut you a check for.
Well, up to two thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
But, there's a, there's a benefit there, to keep them from not being sick as well.
Yeah.
Cause we could go with a policy that don't allow people to pure sick leave, with the hospital and the life work, they just get X amount of PTO days a year, you take them for vacation or you take them for sick leave, you do what you want.
Right. And sick leave, you don't get that when you leave, you, it has to be an Ivers eligible retirement.
Correct.
So it's not like, you leave, you get all the sick, sick leave, it has to be a.
Cause they're sicked out to retirement, they gotta.
Yeah, and two thousand dollars, that's really not even a paycheck for most people, so, I mean, it's not like, it used to be, it used to be, you got
The secondary roads.
They would get four or five thousand dollars, so it's definitely changed.
Yeah, so. So on, on Dave's point, um, I'm just thinking right here, is that, could you have it where on an individual circumstance where someone uh, is injured and looks like he might be out for six, eight, ten months, where he could come to us, the board of supervisors, and appeal to say, hey, I know you passed a policy that you can't use um, my sick leave, but I'm gonna be out for a long time and I'd like to use it, just so I can keep current with my um, premiums that I pay for my health insurance, I don't have to try to make that up over the next twelve months that I am working, I mean, would that be a thing that an employee, that you would have an employee do, pass a policy that said, can't?
That's kind of along the lines of what Kyle mentioned last week, having a.
I'm not against.
Long term.
Something like that, I mean.
Right, I feel like in any case, they can always approach the board, you can rethink your policy.
Would you like to amend it or anything?
Well, I don't know if he needs to, I guess, I was wondering, is it commonplace where a board supervisor passes something and someone can come in and just say, hey, dude, this is an extenuating, extenuating circumstance and uh, I'm not the typical case, I know you passed this just for typical cases, but I'm not typical, so, can they change? But legitimate.
That is legitimate.
Come in and say, hey.
Just like a different payment over the.
I think that they would be, I mean, I would be in that situation.
Right.
Um. But unfortunately, unfortunately, we haven't had those instances, and in the last ten years since Amy's been here, uh, due to policy changes, we haven't seen a lot, but I would like to, I would wonder what it was prior to that, two thousand and eleven or whatever, how how much it was being used.
Yeah, a lot.
A lot, to get a mod factor of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They had, would they have injury leave or something?
Yeah, it was, and I don't even know what all that meant.
Injury leave.
Yeah. Yeah, that was all changed by the time I was here.
And it sounds good to keep it cleaned up and then leave an appeals process.
Yeah.
For a, for a long term.
Yeah, I think every situation is appealable to this board, so.
Okay.
And I think you need to add the jet.
No, I don't think we need to amend that, it's just.
Have an appeal.
It would be.
I don't know, you can, you can amend that if you'd like, but I mean.
No, you know what I mean, I, I don't know.
Anybody?
Human resources would bring that to our.
Well, and that's what, I mean, luckily, I've had a fairly good relationship with most employees and know that they can always come in, you know, if anyone is off, they have questions, you know, and if it's gonna be someone that's off for six months, I would definitely, you know, if they're have the question, I can let them know, hey.
Well, if we had, if we had an amendment, you could do the, you could put the appeal in there for a long term issue as opposed to, you know, the hang tail thing.
But also, remember, if it is a big injury, they would possibly be getting a settlement too, so that is something that, you know, cause we just had one and he made more money in three months than he probably did all year, so.
Yeah, well, maybe we do already have an appeal process.
I, I, I just go, I go back to, it's their accrued sick time that they built up to use and that's the legal way of doing it. Workman's comp providers.
I mean, that's.
Length of the workman, how long you're gonna be on it, it's not, yes, they. How long you're gonna be on it, it's not, yes, they can be a bad apple, but. I guess I, I would hope to trust our employees not to be. Have to make a change.
Job I've ever been in, have you ever been able to supplement work?
And I don't do it in my.
I've had a couple of jobs, but.
We are very generous when it comes to the.
Okay, I would, in the interest of time here, we have people waiting, um, I'm gonna go ahead and bring her to a vote. Believe there's any more discussion that hasn't already been discussed, all right, all in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye. Thank you, appreciate that, quarterly tourism are a part, Shane, would you please come forward?
Um, I'm trying to keep this kinda short for you guys, I know it's a long meeting. Um, so events that I'm working on right now or have just completed, red, white and blue was down on July third. Um, we saw a lot of thirty percent increase on most parts of our event as far as income related, I don't have all the final. Um, information in yet, but um, our free world donations at the gate went up about thirty-three percent from. Twenty twenty-two and in fact are significantly bigger than even before COVID, so, oh, I have. In fact, the COVID time, before COVID era, it was around two thousand, so we're almost uh. Up to three thousand now at the door, through all donations, we do split those numbers with crossroads, they're nice enough to collect the, the donations. So we do get them a portion of our proceeds from the free world donations because they do volunteer their time. Um, and then the merchandise and registrations and things, we saw the event also increased by thirty-two percent, so. Again, um, and are significantly almost double to where they were prior to COVID, so, you know, we're back and going well. Um, in the red, white and blue. That, and part of that too does depend on the day of the year is, I think, we didn't know how Monday would do because. You know, it's a Monday and people are working, but I think a lot of people just extend their weekend, so I think that actually in the long run did benefit us, so. We had the highest rate of attendance we've had and participation we've had in many, many years. All more people have taken part in the activities during the day and the evening, we had a bigger crowd on the fireworks. Display than we've had in a long time, more food vendors than we've had, so everything just was a little bit bigger this year, um, and what more well attended, which is great. Um, also a little messier, I had to go out and clean up afterwards, it was a little messier.
Do you think that's cause you're advertising better?
Um, it could be part and part due to the social media and advertising as well, and we do try to get in, you know, as many. Uh, media sources as we can.
I mean, people just know what we're actually all doing now, cause the parade was better this year, everything.
We did try to get out, you know, a little bit earlier and a little bit more places and stuff like that too, and. Try and put a little more on the social media aspect of things, so that could be part of it as well, I, it'd be interesting to know. But yeah, I mean, and I know there's a lot of people who just expect to go out there every year, we do get some of the campground crowd, um, and then. Some other populate, you know, groups of people, they just come back year after year to participate and then break friends or whatever, so something that's worked a lot too and.
It's being shared more on social media, there are more people, you know, you see it more often, so.
Well, and then I did. And then I did do radio interviews, I always do the one with KDSN, but I did one with, um. Uh, Carols, no Harland, excuse me, Harland's uh, radio station too, and somebody sponsored us to do a feature, a little feature ad thing, so. Um, we didn't have to pay for it, but we got on the radio a little more down there too, so we could have gotten a little bit of tourism that way as well, so. Yeah, I mean, we were really happy with it, it was really busy, we were, we're very, again, very short staffed right now, so we're down multiple people from, usually Devin and his wife would help, so. It was crazy, but we got through it and we did, you know, pretty well with numbers, so.
Good job, by the way.
Thanks.
Ever, has the conservation board had any discussion in regards to. Too much form or, you know, or do you guys have a, ever offered to, cause I gotta have extra staff on or all that. Well, I mean, it obviously showcases the part, is there any, have they ever asked for any reimbursements or donations towards something out there?
So we used to actually split some of these proceeds with them and they've asked that they don't need that, they've actually told us to keep it for the event itself, so. Um, I do talk to Jody about that when I call out there to the conservation office when we verify doing if it's open, cause we always check and make sure, hey, is it still okay for us to do it here? You know, like, we used to split food interviews and some of the things, and they were, they just, you know, they're happy, I think, with the fact that we have it there, they have their.
And fills that.
They can't, their campground is, is full, they have their, their carnival and stuff, so they have actually, I mean. If, if there is an issue, it's not being brought to my attention, cause I do check on it.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I do. Absolutely, and yeah, and that is part of the reason too that I go out the morning after and do all the cleanup in the event area, like they don't, their staff doesn't have to do that. But man, it was messy out there this year, and I, I mean, I just take that as a sign that we had a lot more people, although. We're talking about ways we could prevent that, cause it did take a long time for me to go pick that up, but, um. It's not a bad problem to have, it's just something to do with, so, um, one forty-one garage sales is the next event we have coming up, it's a pretty minor thing. Um, that's August fourth and fifth, and we just accept, we paid the hundred dollar fee so that Dennis and residents can participate in that one forty-one garage sales. It stretches from Sloan all the way down to the point area on one forty-one. Uh, the one forty-one garage sale, people who organize it, the organizers and.
Tourism board pays it or?
Not the board, the, the chamber pays the fee, it's a hundred dollars total, and rather than. Make, pass that cost along to our residents, we just cover the hundred dollar fee so that we get more participation in it, cause that brings more people. Hundred dollars per community, they do that. Um, and it's not required you participate, you can choose not to, but we do, for, cause we're, we get, you get listed on the website with hotels and. Um, food and then all of the sales and stuff get listed, and you do get a, a fair number of people through. Yeah, I know, uh, Manning does a pretty big day that day. Oh, yeah. So, yeah, I don't know what all the other communities do, we choose to just cover that hundred dollar cost, um, we have for the last several years since I've been at the office, truthfully, so.
Wouldn't you just extend that to the other communities and accounting as well?
Well, I think it comes, I mean, basically it's based on the city, so, I mean, I could, yeah, I mean, if that's what. I would have to see through. I don't know where that decision came from, if it was through the board or through Evan, so like, and it was Dennis and specific, or if it, you know, city specific or county, I see where you're saying, cause we are county tourism and it's weird for me. City or county, which way am I going, yeah.
Coming from here, but it's all in the same pool.
Right, I understand what you're saying, cause it's like I'm representing the city, but I'm also representing the county, so which way is it like?
You, you're kinda got a.
Right. Well, and, and when I took this on, I mean, when we started doing this, I was just the admin assistant, so I just got handed this job of, hey, organize this one forty-one.
All you do, I just.
I, I guess from my. Experience part of it, I'm just, it, it got moved for me from when I was the administrative assistant through to the tourism aspect of things to grow into a tourism thing, but yes, I completely see where you're coming from.
You gotta always wear two hats there. Kind of seeing where this county board is kinda showing you those things.
No, I, I agree.
But if they don't come and ask for it too, I don't, but.
What do we get on that, just Charroque, Manila?
Charroque, Manila. Yeah.
And Dennison, obviously.
Yeah, anybody on one forty-one, so yeah, just those, it wouldn't be huge, I know Charroque usually does, I think they do it.
Actually, all you gotta do is get a whole. And, and she kinda, her, her and Christine kinda take care of Charroques, so I mean, to, to share that information, all you gotta do is contact one person.
Well, and they may have already paid for this year, but I can reach out and see what they've done and, and see what they're willing to do or.
Well, he's countywide conscious.
Yeah, no, I, I completely see what you're saying, and I guess that's not even something that, like you say.
Gene, just because we've always done it this way doesn't make it.
Absolutely, absolutely, no, no, I'm, I'm with you.
We can keep making tomorrow a better, a better place. Working on, I think you're doing a good job on that.
I'm not saying.
No, I, I agree with you on, like you said, it's just not something that, now that you're saying that, it's like, it's not something that. You say, I, I have a city job and I have a county job and where they sometimes things follow the city path and I. When they got moved to me in the tourism position, changing them to the county path, it's just like.
To me, the biggest complaint is, that's what I hear a lot of. You know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, don't take it personal, that might be a place for improvement.
I, I agree with you on that, and I will check into that, cause that would be something that, I, I, I totally agree on that, it's just not something I thought of, so I will make a note on that even to. Um. And it's not a huge budget item, so if they could get a little more of it, that would be good too, yeah, one hundred percent, um.
Well, then you, you know, we, we've always talked in the meetings about what do you get for your return from being a member, well, these are the kind of things.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, that, I think that's great, and, and honestly, we, I know there is that issue with a lot of our different things with, you know, Dennison and. Starting communities, like I said, we have been trying really hard, it's been harder since I'm missing the director. To do a lot of that outreach because we're just so overworked right now, but, um, but. It is something that we've been working on and some of that also we can do as much as we can, but we are relying on those communities to. Play a part in that too, like we can reach out, but we can't force them to interact, so. So, so that's one of our, our things, but anything like this that we could do that would create a good, you know. Good feelings between the communities, I think it's worth trying, so I can definitely do that, um. Uh, Tracy BBQ Fest is coming up, we have the band lineup complete now, we're gonna do a new Friday night after party, um, with a Latino band. After the main band on, the headliner band on Friday, that's something we've sent, we're applied to the city, I'm not foreseeing issues to extend our. Our hours, we're trying to, we're, we really are trying to look at things, you know, from a community wise, from a county wise, and. And in all areas as an inclusive event, like representing all of our communities, making sure there's something for everyone really there. That is one place, you know, we have a huge portion of our population that doesn't really participate a lot in the event, and how can we get them here, how can we get them to. Not only to have fun and be part of the community, but also. On our income wise, you know, spend some, you know, have some time and they will, you know, likely spend money at the event too, so. It was just an idea of creating another group of people to come in to the event. And, yeah, and I want to do that, I do, I, I did not have the resources to do.
Days and do it their tractor pull, we've talked about that.
Yeah, we did, and I.
Grand championship.
I have that on my, to do this, but this year was, this current situation is just beyond my ability to take it, take on, so. Two people's work, so. Um, yeah, so, but the band's part is pretty much done, you have a few contracts to get in, and we should have that lineup out here hopefully very soon. Um, sponsorship goal, our original goal is fifty thousand, we're already at fifty, over fifty-five, so we increased it up to seventy-five thousand, so hoping to get that, I got a couple of weeks left. I have a lot of businesses to reach out to yet, um, anybody, never knows if anybody who should be a sponsor or. You know, that I could reach out to, feel free to let me know.
Speaking of that, don't forget that I've got that big trailer.
Yeah, I have it marked.
I don't know where we're gonna put it, I don't know where we're gonna put it, I'm trying to leave that up to you.
We gotta figure that out, but I get the layout to come, yes, so, but we're getting team applications in and vendor applications in, um, we're gonna have, so far I have more food vendors than I've ever had. Pre-committed at this early point in the game, so our food vendor area is going to be full, which is fantastic, um. Lots of things people will eat and sell and enjoy, so that should be great, I need managers really, really badly, um, I have a lot of positions to fill, so. I'm looking for those and working on that here this week, and we're gonna have volunteer applications up very early, we, that's generally been something we've kinda. I will say this, in the past, due to whatever circumstances, there's always something, um, we tend to do really a lot of things. Last minute, so this year our goal, especially because we have actual sort of staff, is to just kinda spread it out and start a lot earlier, so our sponsorship generally hasn't happened until August. We're gonna have it done before August first, and that will allow us to do a lot of these other things too, so, um. Honestly, we're doing a pretty good time as far as timing wise, knowing that it's gonna take us a little bit more time to get through everything. Um, volunteers is one of those things that tends to get put off to the very end, and we always get them, but it's a lot more stressful for. People in charge of getting the volunteers, so we're gonna get those out a little earlier this year, and we're doing an online application process, which hopefully will go smoothly, cause it automatically sends up confirmations and all of that stuff, so. Um, but yeah, so that'll be going on soon, we're gonna start doing a whole lot more social media posting, we have that on our to-do list, it's just been. A lot for us lately, so, um, we're working on it. Then we have the country travels discovery tour, um, tour coming up in the fall, which is that bus tour that I spoke about before, and I'm still working on all the details with Don Reed, but. They've committed again to this year for four or five dates and, and already for four dates in twenty twenty-four as well, so that means more. Coming and staying in hotels and spending money, so. Um, other things, I was at tourism, regional tourism meeting in Audubon, I've been working at the uptime improvement committee and the hot summer night series. Um, and then assisting a bunch of our other organizations, a little bit with their immigrant heritage festival, Don Reed and other things around the area. Trying to do reach outs as possible to the starting communities, it's not been at the top lately, cause barbecue is my focus, but I do need to do, and I. Admit, I need to do a little more on that, but it's always a goal, um. And then just updates and things as needed and some webinars upcoming, pretty much all those things I mentioned, and then the winter special date is December second. We always think it's like, oh, we have plenty of time, and then we get to barbecue and it's like, oh, it's here, so, um, I always try to keep that in mind too. But, uh, yeah, just a lot's going on at the office, um, always looking for. You know, help with things, but, um, if anybody knows anything, especially barbecue related, you know, feel free to send people resources, um, connections, any sort of our way.
Well, there's two promising interviews going on as we're sitting here, so hopefully we'll get you help soon.
Yeah, that would be great.
I'm missing out on them, cause I'm here, but there's a pretty, pretty. Good crew taking care of that.
Right? Oh, goodness, yeah.
Well.
Awesome.
Well, I think you're, I, I, I know you and Mariah have been tasked, so we appreciate. There's a lot to take care of in that office, especially when you don't have the help, and there's a lot of things that aren't getting done now on the director's side. You know, but you guys have been actually even subbing in that, sub, subbing in that, taking care of things that. As best you can. So we appreciate it, alright?
Thank you.
Well, thanks Shane, appreciate you coming in, giving us a report.
Thank you.
Alright, next on the agenda is. Citizens input, Dwayne, did you stop for something?
It's like he planned it.
Get that nail right on the head.
Just, um. Wanted to hand out the notices for our tab and different cases from our appeals for. January of twenty-three, so there's five properties, there's Smithfield, there's, um. Anderson's, the new holders motels and law. And, um, so it shows, um, by Iowa code, we're required to notify the taxi entities. So it shows you what the assessed value is and what they're, um, asking.
These are great.
Smithfield isn't the Anderson's. Just saying, you're like with Anderson, you know. And Smithfield, so Anderson's, uh. We, uh. Had a two-year agreement, um, last year for twenty-one and twenty-two of roughly fifteen million and sixteen million. And so they agreed to that, they're that consultant, and so now they're asking for a value of. Six, there you go. So, and on this, these, this information here, it doesn't tell us what their tax, taxable amount. Taxable value was the year before, it's just says what the twenty-three, right, was requested, what they, yes, how much they wanted to go back, yes.
If all these were to be appealed and passed, what would that, you know, figures of what they?
Um, Walmart is happy that. Doesn't cost them any money out of pocket, you know, other than fees for their appraisers and so forth. Chose to use an attorney out of eastern Iowa, you go to district court, district court can get pretty expensive. Court costs and so forth, so, but they, uh. Petitioned about approximately twenty-five of the Walmart stores in the state of Iowa. That'd be a heck of a good spot. Park everything inside. I remember when they were building that place. They could pull, they could pull in there and dump like side dump trucks and. So they were pouring, you know, slabs and they'd pull in and dump with a side dump semi and then right next to it was a um cement truck. Inside pour and, or you know, running concrete out. I thought that was kind of cool.
So what's the process here, Dwayne? What, what exactly happens there?
So they appeal, we um. Have to answer their appeals. And so we um, the, the board review has contacted George, one-sixth is our attorney. Who you just said before. So you need an attorney that is well versed in real estate values and real estate litigation.
And George is done well first.
And how long does this process take? Um, so the PAB cases. Um, I saw a notice on the PAB bulletin board the other day that said that they did not expect for any of the twenty twenty-three cases. On commercial and industrial to get in front of the PAB board until after January one. And Terry can. We, we had that with Anderson's that, you know, it went on and on for like two years. And then all of a sudden we had to reduce the.
And they had already paid.
So about ten million dollars of assess or taxable value, which amounted to about um, ten million, a thirty dollar levy is. Three hundred? So we had to pick all that up in one year. But, and you know, district court cases, you know, um. Civil cases of of this type are always a year or longer off. Who knows, but.
Okay. Well, thanks for the. Appreciate it. All right, uh, Mr. Munt, do you have anything to bring before the board and citizens input? You're back in here. Did you have something quick?
I just wanted to invite everyone over to our fair booth tomorrow. If you come, well, at any time. But tomorrow, if you come down for the veterans meal, if you come over kind of after that. Jackie Hart, he was the one that was just in here. He uh went to Top Gun. He was like a fighter pilot. He's gonna be there to talk to people. And John Langer will be there. John Langer was the latest one to be inducted into the Iowa Aviation Hall of Fame. So he'll be there too. So.
Cool.
You'll have living history right there. Plus our awesome.
I will say you have one of the best booths.
Yeah, you guys do a great job. I really hated winning the best booth on top of you last year.
We, we know that they have to share the wealth. So we know we're number one all the time.
You guys do fantastic. You really do.
And you can also have props that you can dress up like Clarence Chamberlain and take your picture as you were Clarence Chamberlain.
Cool.
Because you know, it's all about.
Get a little star from airplane, don't fly it.
For Dave's uh, we'll need a birthday party celebration.
We have. That was Pat, a long time ago.
We have Patty or Thomas, do you have anything to bring before the board on citizens input? Hearing none. I, I did, didn't get to speak. And super, I'm just gonna run, run it by you quick, what actually. The steering committee, I had a meeting. It's quickly. Um, they, they went over their proposed platform. Basically things to advance legislation and stuff. Uh, different things are after. See regulatory reform. Most of this stuff here is, I mean, they, they just kind of briefly went over. So I mean, I haven't been there for a lot of these meetings leading up to it. So. What all they're after is a little bit tough to, to follow. But direct federal funding for local infrastructure projects, basically make it more direct to local entities as opposed to. Through all the channels and where it gets gobbled up by the larger entities before it ever gets to us. Uh, federal law regarding use of federal highway administration relief funds, you know, they, they're basically do the same type of thing with that. County road funding for forest health. I, I never realized this, but. We know we're, we're used to having all our roads and in the forests, they have the fire breaks. If you've ever did anything on a military base, they got all these fire breaks. We don't have very many of them out west. So that might also be contributing to our massive wildfires when they kick in. So there, and then they don't have roads that were, so they can do the lumbering. They don't have appropriate number of roads that basically can haul it to the mill. So they're trying to, to, to direct some money towards that. And I actually thought that was. Since we're trying to breathe half of Canada right now, that seemed like an important thing to discuss. Full funding, uh, active transportation infrastructure investment program in a, you know, they, just to get more money out here, more funding. Rails with trails projects, you know, get, get more support for that. And because there's still a lot of old railroad ground that doesn't get used. So they want to do that. And I, I was actually thinking about bike trails and stuff like that, that. You know, Iowa's, you know, very likes to do. I think that could help out here in the western part of the state for tourism and, and exercise purposes. So. I, I was, and, and there's, there's more on here, but it's, you know, leads more into waterways and, and rail stuff that really wouldn't affect us. But I also, they also. Due to my happiness, brought up the uh highway, being able to run the larger, they call them super heavy loads, sort of super heavy trucks is what they're calling it. But it's the ninety, ninety-six thousand pound trucks with the axles and stuff that you've heard me talk at a nauseam. But the uh. They, they still keep thinking that's too heavy. And, and when I actually got on there. And asked about that, I said, could you define what you think's too heavy, the super heavy? Define what is super heavy? And I said. But I said, if we're putting the axles and the tires on the ground. And, you know, we've got the linear weight and all the things that we need to have to basically put less pressure on the road and less impact on the bridge spans. I said. These trucks are actually not super heavy. The eighty thousand pound truck is, if you want to compare the two. And then I started trying to explain to him what I meant by that. You're eighteen tires on the ground versus twenty-two and you only added ten thousand. And I went through. Well, right away then, well, we've got a lot of engineers in the crowd, so you'll have to talk to them when you get down here. And I said, well, you can bet I will. So, so I'm already trying to get myself kicked off the transportation steering committee. So anyway. But uh, but to me, just that, that little bit, I think it would seem like it was gonna be, I might have a good trip. I might have some fun arguments.
Given your tenacity, you'll probably succeed.
Yeah, well, let's, let's see. We'll see.
Save back one of those cupcakes.
So anyway, uh, and then I'm on the veterans one and, and military and veterans one, and that's already had some stuff. So anyway, I'm looking kind of forward to this. Let's see what, how this first meeting goes. Anything else to be brought before the board? I don't think you get something.
Yeah, make sure if you have not looked in this folder, please do. So there's a packet from Plains area for that training that you all. Funded through opioid. Um, but just take a look at it. Um, there were some tips and things like that given. And I don't know what your thoughts are on that. So look at that. As long as we pay it.
Don't go to me and go with short stick tips or like.
Don't eat yellow snow. I mean, no, financial tips or whatever. You look at it and let me know. So you look at that. Um, Chief Treo um. Forwarded some information on the light fixtures that he, so he met with Ty and I about doing some improvements at the law enforcement center. Um, also to include possible drywall installation. So take a look at that stuff. Um, we also have some quotes in here from Carol Control for the AC units that were damaged from hail. And what our ICAP insurance is willing to pay. So look at that. I'm, I'm hoping to have that on the agenda next week so y'all can take. Action. So there are a few of this.
Even like the sheriff trail thing or the chief trail, I think even if we did a discussion on that, do you think we want to do the discussion on that or?
Um, yeah, we can do discussion on that. I think we can, we'll put something on the agenda.
I won't be here next week because I don't fly out till.
Oh, I won't either for that matter.
So. But I'll be on Zoom. I mean, I, I can be on Zoom, but my flight don't leave time to be here. Enjoy your time. Let Jean run the gavel. So Terry won't be able to join that hair, having to hear this.
I won't be here. So I gotta go to um, the, Megan does. So some of this you might wanna, I don't know if you want to wait another week or not. I have a, what's it called? Title six. Unfortunately, I hold that position, which I'm gonna get y'all to change. They don't want to do it anymore.
You don't want to do it anymore?
No, no titles. Anyway, I gotta go. There's some training out here, boulders. So we're gonna go to that. Learn what I need to learn and be ready to train the next person. I, I mean, it's not that big a deal, but sometimes I just don't have time for some of those little snappu things that happen.
So the supervisor, we tomorrow?
Sure he's here to volunteer.
Yeah.
At the fairgrounds?
Tomorrow the fairgrounds, yeah.
By nine thirty, toward ten?
What are we doing?
Fairgrounds, nine thirty, start growing.
Flag racing is at noon and lunch.
Oh, okay, cool. All right.
Okay.
All right, I move with you.
All right. Motion been made by Mr. Dozart, Cherry. Mister, Mister Dozart, signed by Mister Mulbauer. On favor states, somebody saying aye. Posse no, chair votes aye. Have a great day.